All right, welcome everybody. We good? Okay. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session of the city council. Let the record reflect all council members present except Councilmember Blair who's asked to be excused. Councilmember Myers will be joining us shortly. And also Vice Chair White will also be joining us shortly. Before we get into the agenda review, is there any calendar items or anything we need to be aware of, Janine?
No, we do have a meeting next week and just a reminder that it's going to come up fast. Budget, you know, starts in May. And we were also expecting some proposals for some water rate changes. So depending on how that all goes, it's possible we may have to schedule an extra meeting here or there. But we'll discuss it with leadership. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you. And also the April 16th meeting, there will be no meeting on that Tuesday because the planning and the league conference are both kind of coinciding there. So we'll be missing a lot of people. Okay. So a general review for the 6:00 PM city council meeting. We have some approval of some minutes. Councilmember Graff, hopefully you've had a chance to review those. A report from an administration on the Marshall White Advisory Committee. And so we'll hear their report and the action is the extension of the sunset date. Any discussion or questions or comments on any of that? Yeah.
If I could, Chair, the, there was some discussion about, right now, the sunset is set to renew in another three years. And so there was some discussion about making that period longer. But I've talked with the administration and they're okay if you want to do that. But they wanted to let you know that they are making some changes, particularly with the parks and recs committees, and they're going to be combining some. And so it might be good to just leave it at the three years with the expectation that they'll be coming back and making some changes anyway. But I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then we'll have some public comment, I'm sure. And that is it for the agenda. Any, anything else there? I guess, nothing else there? Okay. We originally had scheduled tonight to hear from the dinosaur park, the Georgia S. Echols Dinosaur Park Annual Report. But due to some scheduling conflicts, we will have to get them back on the schedule. The executive director and board president were unable to make it today. So I guess, Janine, you'll be working with them to get them back on the schedule.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
We had a constituent reach out to ask a little bit more about if there was any additional reports like for their financials, et cetera, that they usually submit to the council. I wasn't sure if that was a normal practice. I do know for most nonprofits, you can look online and find their 990 in the past and get information too. But I don't know if that's something that the
That comes to us.
That usually comes to us for them like, because I can't remember, do we approve their fees or the nature center? I can't remember the structure.
You do redo their fee, you do approve their fees. And so they do give you some financial information, but it's not a full-blown financial report. So if that's something you want, we could probably track it down. I'm sure that they generate them.
And I'm sure it's public records somewhere anyway, but it might be something worth asking us to have as part of our packet too.
Yeah, I mean, I would think a nonprofit, that would be something that we could find. Or I'm sure they would be happy to provide that if we wanted to. So we, should we go ahead and request that then? We'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and request that. Sure. You're welcome. Okay. Sliding into the pole position here, we have Joe Simpson to talk to us about the proposed local historic district Adams Avenue to Jefferson Addis Avenue, 24th to 27th Street. Proposal.
Correct.
All right.
All right, members of the council, it's good to be with you tonight. So this proposal is an application that had come through to the landmarks commission to consider a creation of a local historic district. And this is from Adams to Jefferson, 24th to 828th Street. The petitioner is Alan Toome. So to give some reference here, the nominationary is this, the orangish-yellow colored boundary. It shows in relation to the Jefferson Historic District, which is outlined in blue to the adjacent east. And this is, so there's not confusion, there was another petition made by Travis Pate for a block area that's outlined in red. So this is, there's some overlap there, but just so the council's aware they're separate. Oops. So I know some questions that staff had received from the council was to talk a little bit about the difference between a national registrar versus a local historic register. So the national register, you know, lists out here recognition, but it also provides access to grants and tax incentives. There's also a lot of technical assistance, but it doesn't have restrictions as far as what owners can do. And just to point out that this area falls within that east-central area. What's called the east-central bench historic area. And so as a national boundary already applied to it, the, there is a lot of incentive here, Barton. This is Barton had put the carrot, so there's a lot of carrot, I guess I would say, with the national register. The local register does have recognition. There is technical assistance. We have a lot of local staff. But it does require landmarks review for alterations. There are restrictions involved. And any new construction or modifications have to go through some additional hoops. So this is a little bit of the stick, I would say, is, we're to kind of put it in really kind of basic terms. So there, there is some overlap, but just, just so you're aware of the difference in what, what one is versus the other. So when we look at our code for the Title 17 has all of the landmarks code. And it does allow any person or group to nominate a perspective historic reset, resource or formal designation. So if someone wanted to come in and say, I want to make the whole city of Ogden on the local register, they, they could. And there's no, no guideline on that. However, since the 1980s
Joe, can I ask a question about that though? So if, if somebody did that, let's just, let's just say that. And, but you have a house that's maybe 20 years old, wants to put a roof on or redo the windows. Since it's not really a historic structure, does it still have to go through all the landmarks and all those things? Because it's almost, just because it's on the
If, if it's on the low, if it's in a local historic district or on the local registry, it does.
So that's the thing. It's not because it's particularly historic, it's just
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They correct. No, and a prime example of this would be, there are several buildings in the 25th Street Historic District, particularly towards the west end on the south side that are newer buildings. But they are, they are in the historic district on the local register and are subject to landmarks review for even a new sign or onings on the building. And so they are very restrictive. And, you know, when this, as the city adopted a landmarks commission and started having local registry. I mean, obviously, it's not something that everyone came flooding in wanting to do. There were a lot on 25th Street, but there were a lot that city staff would initiate. And then there became a point where there's some contention where if the city is initiating or someone's initiating a property to be on the local register, there's concerns that that stick, like I talked about, that could, could hinder and potentially be a taking. And so in the eighties, a policy was kind of laid down where the city would no longer seek those out and make those initiations. It would be come from property owners, which, as you can imagine, those nominations have significantly reduced since that time period of, of putting things on the local register. But that has been our policy. Got a good little chart here that kind of breaks down that code of process. When someone comes and makes a nomination and it really, technically, like you said, anybody can come in and make a nomination for any boundary anywhere by our code. It first step, you know, once a petition's filed, it goes to the landmark's commission for consideration. And they can consider the designation or they could choose not to consider the designation. If they do consider it, then there is a notice that's sent out to all the property owners. And then public meetings are held. If they choose not to just, to consider it and disapprove the, the petition, then that's, those steps are taken out. So once it goes landmarks commission, so with this, this proposal that we have, this particular petition, it went through that route where it was looked at by the landmarks commission. There was a recommendation of disapproval and now it's before the council. One thing to point out is by our code, that period of the landmarks review and analysis for the project for consideration of, of registration is a 60-day period to act on that by our code. So it, it's a very tight period that has to be met. So when we look at this overall area, there's about 100 individual property owners within the described boundary. And these vary from public, private, institutional ownership within the area.
Joe, while I've got you on that slide, if I may. So this falls into the national historic designation, this area, correct? And it overlaps with whatever the name of it is that's outlined in blue. Tell me what that is again.
So the one to the west, there is a little slight overlap. It's really just adjacent to the Jefferson Historic District, to the adjacent
And then Mr. Pate's proposal, what, where we've got overlap, what's the point? You know, if, let's just say, just look at the national designation, what's the point of creating a local designation when it's already been recognized at now?
Absolutely. And that's a great question. So again, going back to the difference between local and national, the local has a lot more teeth in it as far as review that's required, control by the city prevents, you know, demolition is another thing.
Yeah, and that was going to be my next question. So if this guide, if this guides alterations and additions to ensure historic integrity is retained, what about, I mean, there are a lot of historic buildings within that boundary. But there's also a lot of buildings that might at some point benefit the city by coming down. Or, or an owner might choose to come down and redevelop or rebuild something. How does this affect demolition?
So this would make it so demolition would be, have to be reviewed by the landmarks commission and determined if a building has historic significance, if it's contributory. And, you know, that discussion would have to be held. Generally, they're not. And usually ends up going into a whole nother can of worms of demolition by neglect. Sometimes owners will pursue, we do have some code for that, but yeah, that's the general process.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good questions. So looking at our policy again, we look at having the owners provide a petition. Right now, we don't have any of the owners, zero of 100 property owners that have consented to the designation. And again, our policy is that those really should come from the property owner.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
We talked about that a little bit last week. What are the parameters for that consent?
So just a, a signed petition would be satisfactory of the property owners in support of it. The other is, when we, when we look at doing an analysis of a, a area, there's a lot of commitment and cost that's involved in doing an analysis of that and study. 60 days is, you know, just too far short a period to do something at this scale. And again, staff resources are not available to, for this to work to do this kind of large investigation.
May I ask a follow-up about that?
Yeah.
And would 60 days be enough time to do like one building? Members asking what the 60 days parameter, like, should that be changed regardless of whether we agree to this proposal or not? Is 60 days really appropriate for any historic?
I mean, it may, it's probably enough for a single one, and that's usually what we've had happen. The, in the past, the, the actual designations of areas have been like a long process that have been done. Generally, city initiated and that have occurred that way. We have three particular local districts in the city at this time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. But just to emphasize there, those investigations can be expensive and they take a long time to, to go through the process. We want, we did want, want to talk a little bit about the landmarks commission, and this is kind of a good segue is, you know, we have a lot of exciting things going on with the city right now. We're looking at a whole unified code update. We're looking at a whole general plan update. A lot of, and landmarks, code and plan will be a large part of that as well. So right now, the landmarks commission in their five-year work plan, they want to work on offering and promoting incentives to, to designate historic resources and increase community outreach. And, and looking at adding properties to local register. Right now, on, on the, I'd say on their plate, right now, looking at Marilyn Drive is, is next one that's being looked at. And also city-owned properties, those are a lot easier to work with because they're not a private property right taking issue involved with that. And then again, just that we'll be looking at updates of the general plan and the code, landmarks ordinances. So your question of the 60 days, we definitely are probably going to be considering that language. We also have to balance that with the language of the state code as well and bringing our code in line with that. And that's the, the next slide here. If we look at the Utah Code 109A503, and this is, it, it outlines what's called a citizen-led process for creating his historic designation boundary, a local boundary. Under that state law, it requires greater than 33% of the owners in the area to agree in writing to that designation. So we need a, a property owner vote, a minimum of 50% turnout or participation in that process and 67% in favor. Now, it does have language in the state code that allows a council to override that. And I think a prime example, and it's one of the few, I think, since I've been here, I've seen maybe two or three, well, maybe more than that, maybe like four designations that we've had done. A lot of them with, with redevelopment projects, but some were private. And one that the city had a real stress to have put in place was with the old first security building, which is now Wells Fargo, now it's the Cash Valley, so. And back when that was being changed with the previous owner, they were against having that go on the local register. But just to the, and this is talked about in the report to the, to the council, but it was determined to be such importance to the public that, that that building needed to be saved and protected. The concern of having a private owner go in and demo that building where it's so, it's one of the few skyscraper buildings that we have in the city. And so, but that was a really a rare exception that we ever seen that occur. And again, looking at state code, our code doesn't technically have that same language in place. But we would definitely be looking at that as we do these code updates to the landmarks code for sure. So, you know, that's hopefully answered some of your questions. The, the, the commission did review this and, and felt that it would need a lot more work. Barton did a little bit of preliminary analysis as far as what timeframe we'd be looking at for an area this large and as far as cost and, and manpower. And he'd say we'd be looking at approximately $20,000 in the research and study. And probably at least a year to, to go through and do all the analysis of all the properties.
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I've got more questions. On, in the planning staff analysis, can you speak a little bit to the statement where it says the current petition coming on the heels of the prior recommendation of denial, when overlapping areas abusive and disrespectful about the landmarks commission and landmark staff, they urge them to deny the petition, but also as a separate action to adopt a policy to curb such abuse? I mean, can you just speak to that a little bit? What would be that policy change or?
The, sorry, I didn't catch all of that, the policy, what was the policy?
It says that they think that this is disrespectful and that in a separate action, staff recommends the commission, which I'm guessing is the landmarks commission, adopt a policy to curb such abuse in the future. So first to speak to the abuse idea and then what policy would need to be changed?
I think, I think what it comes down to is the reality of being able to, to do something this large and the timeframe given to, to accomplish it. Again, if, just to play devil's advocate, if I made a petition tomorrow and said, I think the whole city of Ogden needs to be on the local register, there's nothing to prohibit that. But obviously, to undertake its deep analysis of, of that large of an area would be quite expensive and quite time-consuming. And so it, it's, it's just really, it's really felt that, you know, this is, this is something we, we feel is important. We do want to look at creating areas and preserving historic resources. But we also need to make sure it's done right and that it's been studied appropriately and that determinations can be made. That's, I could speak to that. Barton may have others to add to that.
Any other questions or Councilmember higher?
Well, yeah, I, I think, I'm just, you know, we've got these other historic districts.
Yep.
And they're, I assume functioning great.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now, how, how did they come to be? I mean, did they came parcel by parcel or did they have a petition group? How did it all happen?
There was, the city had initiated, so you're talking about the local register. Those, those, like you said, were, there were some probably joint effort between local property owners and the city. But it was a long process. It wasn't a 60-day process, I will say that for sure. So, but
But I guess to clarify, it was from within or was it, was it from without?
I, I, I'm not 100% sure. I'd have to look at the analysis of that. I know the city had paid and participated and obtained funding to create like the national register. We have what's called the call survey, which was done and determine pretty much the central area of buildings that are considered contributory or significant. And we use those, there's actually codes that use that survey to make determination of allowing a building to be, have a special reuse just so that building doesn't get demolished. But those other districts were a lot more intensive study. I have seen the old files. We do have a bunch of the files and the studies that were done on them. There's a lot of history and, and work that has to go through review and to, to make determinations of whether it's a historic resource is significant and contributory. Yeah.
Do you know if any of the, you mentioned, going back to the couple of slides where you, the, that one there? That there may be some city-owned properties that we're looking at for historic designation? Do you know any of them? Are they in this, this or last week's boundaries that we've looked at?
No, there would be, I know there's areas like in parks and, and things like that, that, that have been looked at. I know just ones I know offhand, like in West Ogden, there's like an air raid siren that is out there that has been discussed about putting that on the register, things like that.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
Thanks. I guess the second to last point, bullet point you've got, there's this update, general plan, historic preservation. Does that overlap into our discussion about potentially what we're looking at today, this type of?
Well, I think, I think this is saying what we're, what we're working on now and has just really started to get its, its legs moving as far as the code update and plan update. And those are dealing with the entire, I would say, general plan update for not just, and landmarks is a big part of that, but that's everything. We're talking housing, transportation, parks and open space, you know, many things. And so, yeah, that historic definitely needs to be updated as part of that. And so just mentioning that as well as landmarks codes, the code update. This is one hiccup that we're seeing here where it's like this 60-day period to make an act and decision on large area, which just is, is not feasible.
The petitioner is here. I don't know if anyone has a specific question for him or?
I do.
Do you?
If you don't mind, stepping up.
Do you have a, do you have a question?
Go to the mic, yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
Come on.
Hello, neighbor. And it's kind of similar to the question I was asking Travis last week is, um, who have you talked to with the property owners in this area about this designation?
Just our local neighborhood for now.
I mean, out of the hundreds that are in the
Nobody. Well, I think that you have to realize that seven groups of people, seven families, seven real estate companies own pretty close to 30, 40 of the buildings. There's like 31 There's like thirty one, by my count, uh Victorians in the place and forty craftsmen. The part I would like to say, which uh Ogden's legacy of history of these old houses of, of, I shouldn't call them old houses, these old beauties is is going away. Um, I don't believe that Ogden City or the people of Ogden maybe have the respect for them they used to have. And I point to our street where, where uh during the RTA or UTA, whatever construction, they ran the gravel trucks and the buses down Jefferson. So you have a beautiful brick street with rails on it. You're running eighty thousand tons of gravel down and eighty thousand pounds. So it's kind of gone away. The other point I'd like to make is this area is adjacent to all these new areas below Washington we're we're putting up. In the future, as the Olympics come, the two fifty celebration and all these other places, I would hope that tourists who come in would take the advantage of going through these areas versus just driving down two blocks of Jefferson and going, is that it? Because that's what happens. As you know, we get people driving and walking down our street all the time, reading the signs. I would think that we could make this area slowly, vastly, whatever, talk to the owners, give them whatever help they want, but have an avenues of our own, like in Salt Lake City, adjacent adjacent to the city area. So mine is not necessarily, oh, we have to do this protection and we only can you know, keep with a thing. My thing is let's get that area cleaned up and in a very nice condition for the future of Ogden, which is going to be important in the next ten years. Because right now, from what I see, Utah County is taking our Olympic venues away from us. So if we want to continue to be a little bit backward in my mind, okay, we're going to sit here with our rodeo and that's going to be it. Okay, that's good. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I I just think I'd say, yeah, it's a tough move. But it's an important one to save some of these areas for yeah, our future business opportunities from companies coming in, the tourist industries coming in, and also the pride of Ogden. Because from the time when I was a young man, growing up on Maryland Drive, which I did, and I don't see it as near important as those other hundred houses out there. Uh, I just see us going from the Utah's second city to Utah's tenth. Already we've fallen behind Provo, Orem, St. George, American Fork, probably. Is is this the way we want to keep going? We're we're building our future ghettos all over town. How about we just take a little of that effort, put it into making our legacy and our history a bit better? That's my point.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So we'll have some discussion on that and um yeah, I guess we'll uh we'll get back on a direction after our leadership on this one. Uh, next up, we have Brandon Ripien to talk to us about the creation of a flex industrial zone. This is continued from February twentieth of this year. Welcome.
Oh, awesome. Thanks. As you said, we, or this is a continuation of the previous discussion we had for the flex industrial zone. Um, since then, we met with um the airport manager and discussed some of the um, the, I guess, concerns that he had with some of the uses that were within the allowed within the flex industrial zone. And we feel like after meeting with him and working with the um the applicant, Assilia Investments and Mike Nichols with Bowman Kemp, that we've come to a good compromise. So the, let's see if this will go. Okay, here we go. So just again, um, the purpose of the flex industrial zone. So the flex industrial zone um is meant to provide space for a variety of uses uh that range from commercial to industrial type um activities. Um, some of the uses that are common in flex industrial include limited industrial uses, warehousing and distribution, indoor commercial, um, as well as some construction contractor trades. And uh, so this is becoming a very popular use uh throughout Utah and probably throughout the the nation. Here are some examples of what flex space looks like or what the buildings look like. A lot of times they're masonry buildings, they're tilt ups usually. Um, but they're uh very popular because they can be adapted to several different uses. And they're um very clean spaces. So we, um, like I said, we, after receiving comment from the council and then meeting with the airport manager, um, we did um look into placing some limitations on some specific uses. Because because the zone can be used throughout the city, we looked specifically at the area next to the airport. And so there are some limitations that we decided were important as we looked at this specific property. So in the um, in the the land use chart, we've actually um highlighted some uses that we that we wanted to make sure didn't cause any conflict with the airport. And so there's two limitations that we've um put in footnotes. The first is, so on the use, it'll have a five. And that five indicates that the use is uh not allowed within or under the airport uh approach surface or transitional surface. And then uh footnote six is public use within or under the airport approach surface or transitional surface, may not include any dwelling units, areas accommodating assembly uh of over thirty persons. And any use that emits fumes, causes glare, or otherwise may interfere with or create hazards for airport operations. So we went through the land use chart. We looked at, you know, what are, what are the uses that could um cause issues to the airport or have um I guess, some conflict with what we wanted to do with the airport? And so we went through the that and um placed those limitations on those uses. And this, this map shows where the transitional surfaces as well as the um airport approach surface. So as I stated before, so this is kind of a zoom in of the property that is proposed to be uh to become the flex zone. And here is the list of uses that we've placed the limitations on. So um, those could include a church or a house of worship. Definitely, uh, the airport manager said that we don't want single family dwelling units for night watch. So that was something that was removed. Um, and there were a variety of other uses that were um that were removed because of conflicts such as outdoor entertainment, um, that could cause dust or um other issues. And then also that footnote uh six that talked about public buildings. So that was a use that was also removed from the list. And then I'd mentioned that there were some um, some uses that could uh, I guess, be competitive or uh conflict with the uh airport use. So some of the uses that we had removed or reduced were the outdoor entertainment, so such as um go kart tracks, outdoor sports, um, fuel farms, so the aviation fuel that was removed. And then the retail sale of aviation fuel, because the the airport also um obviously sells that on uh, on the airport property. We also reduced the outdoor storage from twenty five percent to fifteen percent. So we feel like we've um come to a good compromise. We did uh share our revisions with the applicant and he, um, well, the applicant has requested that some of the uses that we initially removed um be considered. And after we went through these, we do feel like these are uses that are common are commonly found within the flex industrial. And we don't feel like these would be in conflict with the airport use. So some of the uses that they are requesting are edu- educational uses, um, trade or vocational schools, um restaurants, a lot of the flex industrial space. They'll actually manufacture the food on site, but they do have um, like taste or, yeah, like where they can taste the food. Um, so some of them do have restaurants associated with those uses. There's um like the Hive Winery, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's in Leighton. They have a tasting room um as part of their winery. So um, yeah, a lot, a lot of these uses are common within the flex space. Um, and we see a lot of um, like CrossFit gyms, things like that in these spaces as well. So we feel like these are reasonable um requests. And um, the applicants are here. If you have any questions specific for them, but we would propose that um yeah, that we move forward with these uh, these, I guess, suggestions.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon or?
Brandon, if, you know, uh, we did talk a little bit about some of these uses and and I've, I've tried to let some of those conversations marinate a little bit. You know, there's, there's the the threats to airports. Uh, not here necessarily, but elsewhere. Yeah, seem to concern noise and 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 things like that. People, you know, even though an airport's been there a hundred years, people move in and and five years later that the airport's got to go because it's disturbing my peace, you know? And uh, you know, and so as I thought about a church, I thought, yeah, here you are right in the middle of some kind of a uh you know, sacred church event and and a Gulfstream is taking off on runway two one, you know? I I'm not sure that's a great idea, but it's just a thought, you know, as as I let this kind of marinate. And the other thing that I, and I mentioned this last time, if we look at at the uses in in the C zones, and there's lots of them, and we take the uses that are in the in the M zones, and there's a lot of them. And we try to include them all into one zone, we really don't have a C zone and an M zone anymore.
Right, yeah, I remember.
And so, and and I don't want to avoid that. I mean, we do have plenty of places for these kind of uses to be. I think the nature of uh of airport, this, I mean, air, property this close to an airport, people that buy property this close to an airport need to understand that they're by the airport.
Right.
And there are some things that go along with being next to an airport. And especially in this case where they're inside the the roadway. In other words, they can be airport property. Um, I think there's, there's consequences for for buying that property. And maybe it is that you limit your uses, you know, because you're you're so close to an airport. Um, that being said, I mean, I I also visited with uh Mike Nichols and I do believe that they ought to be able to do something on their property to make, to make uh that property pay for itself or, you know, whatever. Um, I'm just, I guess I just became a little uncomfortable about some of the things, you know, throwing too much into this zone that washes down our other zones, for one, and and two, may make a threat to the airport. Those are, those are the reasons that I have my concern. Not said.
Hey, Brandon, can I, if it's okay, Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? So I see this slide and it says request to add some uses that are common in the flex industrial zone. So these are being included in the flex zone, but if you go back to slide seven, most of these will have that that number five note on them. So they wouldn't actually be allowed on this piece of property by the airport, but they would otherwise be allowed in the flex zone. Is that correct?
Well, so, yeah, so this slide shows what we initially proposed um based on the input that we received. And so I wanted to list all of the items that we originally uh placed the limitation on. And then we shared that with the the applicant. And after going through, they'd requested that some of the uses um be added to the the flex zone. And so we knew what there would be negotiation and we would um come to agree, an agreement. So I was uh, yeah, just basically saying, we reviewed these uses and we don't feel like these do have a conflict. So the the previous slide was what we had originally removed. And then these are some of the uses that that they proposed.
These wouldn't have that number five.
Correct, to add back in. That's right.
Good question. We do have the petitioners. Does anybody have a specific question they'd like to ask?
I do.
Come, come on up. One or both or?
Is it a zoning question or an airport question?
It it's more about flex industrial question and its application. So.
Sorry, Mike is kind of the the airport guru and I'm the flex industrial, yeah, there you go.
So, uh, help me understand what flex industrial is. So here's, here's how I frame it in my mind. So I'm a business, I want ten thousand square feet, you've got a thirty thousand square foot building, I lease ten thousand square feet, my business grows. I want five thousand more square feet. I can only get it, however, if you have space available. Otherwise, I got to move. So what does the, what does the flex part actually provide me as a business that wants ten thousand square feet to begin with? But what advantage is there when there isn't space reserved for my potential growth? It's consumed by other tenants.
Yeah, that's a good question. It, and I think flex is maybe a spin off of what this is, but it's not necessarily a we work type situation, right? Where you you use and and leave and move and whenever you wish on a month to month basis. Now, this is more traditional leases, like an office space or a retail space or whatever it may be. But the reason flex comes into play is because it's flex in terms of there's warehouse in the back, in office or storefront in the front. So usually how these buildings are built is it's concrete tilt with storefront on the on the face side. And the storefront allows for a small retail play or a small restaurant play or a small, you know, a small service oriented business where the back can be more manufacturing, distribution. Um, and, you know, storage per se for those businesses that do both. So, for example, Brandon's winery, right? You can create wine or make wine, however you phrase that, in the back, and you can have taste testing in the front. You can sell bottles of wine and, you know, it it essentially, it's not a retail play. It's not straight commercial and it's not straight industrial. It's a little bit of both where tenants can build or create Mickey to embrace blankets in the back and sell them in the front, you know, so it's.
Exactly, or or um, a plumbing fixture showroom in the front and the trucks are out the back with their supplies in the morning.
Exactly. And the and the issue we run into, and this is why Brandon says it's so common without you, throughout Utah now, is because people want the space, right? People that are creating these things want to be able to have a place to sell them in one specific place. You think of bucked up energy, for example, they're creating energy drinks and they need a place to you know, package these energy drinks, but they also want a retail play in the front. And right now, if they don't have a flex space, they have to have separate retails and they have to have separate distributions. And this is a place where those smaller companies that are growing, that don't need hundreds of thousands of square feet, can create a small business, can create a millwork shop in the back and sell your small cabinetry parts, your woodworking pieces in the front. And it can be a place where these small companies don't need to have huge, you know, rental liabilities and they can And they can do that in a small, smaller flex space like this.
Don't we have this front end retail and backdoor service already operating in this? In Utah, I I don't understand how this is unique in some way.
It's not unique, but in Ogden, there's not a zone that allows for both of those, and that's what we're trying to create now. Whether that's for our parcel or for other parcels within Ogden, I think Ogden, you know, there's nothing negative, it's just. You don't have an opportunity for a developer to come in and create a space like this, and that is what we're trying to create. Is whether it's for the Kemp's piece of land or whether it's for a piece of land a mile down the street. There's no place where you can have this quasi-retail and quasi um industrial in the same spot.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not the video, the um track line right there's um.
Ogden Zone, yeah.
They have both, but I'm just trying to compare it to another place.
If you know where it is in the zone, I I can find it.
And so just to clarify what you hit on too, for me to confirm, this is. Uh defining the zone, this is not rezoning this particular piece of property, so this is creating a zone that could be adopted. Anywhere in the city, a a petition could come to us to consider a rezone to flex.
That is, that's right, and then we placed the footnotes specifically for property that's adjacent to the airport. So that it also is um compatible with the airport, so, yes.
So to cut him off of your question, and I I was thinking, you know, with the the. The ice cream bar company that we were courting for the for the track line, they were going to have exactly that. They were gonna have a thing out front where they could do, you know, sell their seconds or whatever it was, you know? I I don't know how they were gonna work it, but but they were gonna have some retail uh way to purchase things to the. To the to the locals who walked up and and that's already allowed in, wh- where is that allowed? How is that and how is it allowed, it's a percentage?
I think we had to amend that zone to allow that at that.
Really?
And I think it, I don't, I think it was a conditional use potentially.
Is that what Ogden Zone is? Not to pick on them, but I just know they have both.
So, yeah, and that is a, the track line does have its own unique zoning.
Okay, that's what it is.
And so it does, but there, there are zones in our industrial zones. That do allow a small component of retail, but it.
Based on percentage, right?
But it's very small, it's fifteen percent is generally what you see, so. Something that may wanna be a little larger doesn't quite work, we have this kind of fixed line industrials for making things. Commercials for selling things, you know, and it's the mix in between.
How far is worth, or do they, do they just become non-conforming?
Far, oh, like far as ice cream, yeah, um.
I don't think they make, I don't think they make the ice cream.
It's pretty much all retail now.
Yeah, they don't make the ice cream there.
Well, they used to.
Yeah, and they used to make a lot of manufacturing too, so, we had down downtown, we had. Well, and they were there probably before this, I know they were there before the zoning, so.
Okay, so they were just, they were just legal, not.
Yeah, but they, I think.
Wanna know, I just.
But I do believe they did have a manufacturing zoning, we, all that north area of our downtown was manufactured.
We don't wanna get the word out.
I I really do like the, they're, they're talking about um synergistic compatible type uses. That in my mind is what flex is for, it isn't, let's just do something so we can think of what we wanna do there later. You know, we we have something in mind that we wanna do there now and we wanna make sure that it's it's a, it's legal. And and I think there is a difference between that close to the airport and somewhere else. But, so I I I'm happy that we're talking about this flex zone thing.
And I will say, this issue's come up with all kinds of uses, like microgreens was one that came up recently and it's like. Okay, you can't just, they wanted to go this location, but it's like you can't just do the microgreens cuz that's manufacturing, they wanna have. You know, retail, so you gotta do a retail component with with that. Um this, it happens a lot, tortilla manufacturing, you know, and it's like, okay, you gotta do some sale if you wanna go in that zone and. They have to meet a certain percentage and it's, you, you you don't, i- it's difficult when you wanna or wanting to do both. And that's really what this zone is, to provide an opportunity for both.
Yeah, it allows the business to adapt.
Out of curiosity, what is the smallest square footage to what is the largest square footage in that zone?
For the zone, um three thousand. I think we had three thousand square feet was the size. Yes, the minimum lot size is three thousand square feet.
And then the largest could be as big as the building, is that?
Correct, yeah.
And then if I may, just one leading to Mr. Hires' uh comment a little bit earlier. Um in your conversations with our airport manager, did he have any shared thoughts about losing? AC zoned space as it pertains to the airport's plans for growth and its master plan?
No, he didn't have any concerns, especially because this property only barely touches the portion of the airport. So it really only shares a small percentage of the fence with the property.
Yeah, I would just like to ask Mr. Nichols for what his proposed uses for the property will be.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Uh I'll then make this real quick, but when you talk about limiting uses in this area near the airport. You have to realize that AI, which is your airport proper, it has some of these uses already. Many of them, restaurants, Bickering Sisters, uh Williams International is inside of your AI right now with a large number of people. Doing a lot of different things, Work Med is in your AI. Uh AC, Rickenbackers, Doolittle's Deli, Northrop Grumman was located there and is still located there with hundreds. They have had hundreds of employees. The FAA doesn't limit the number of people or the uses within the transitional surface zones. Transitional surface zones are purely for high limitations. Uh so I think for us to try to limit things in this area when they're not limited even closer or in your airport is not rational. Restaurants, uh educational, the FAA does say they don't want a city to locate a school. Or a place of worship in proximity to an airport, which we understand that. But if you eliminate education entirely, you're eliminating flight, school, training, you're you're eliminating a technical college from doing AMP training. Airframe and power plant training, you're eliminating, I believe at one point we were eliminating karate, dance. Uh anything else that could be considered educational. And and we just want to be careful not to impose limitations on this piece next to the airport when those things are really allowed. Closer to the runways and closer to the airport. In the transitional surface areas north of the airport is Chevron, I I I would guess that uh Jetway. I I forgot their new name, but the old Jetway Company is in the transitional surface zone, all those businesses around Chevron are for sure. So you've got all these uses going on already in AI and AC and in the transitional surface area. So I don't see a sense in limiting this beyond public schools, uh. Churches, synagogues and so forth, so I just wanna say that about uses. Questions? Thank you.
So where, and I know that we're talking about the zoning it itself, but where we are looking at those acre, those acres, it that's the. It's across the street from a residential area. Um is that in Ogden or is that in?
It's in Roy.
And have we reached out by any chance to the Roy Planning Department to let him know that what we're doing?
I have not. Oh, sorry.
Let me address that too, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Part of this land is in Roy City, two point two seven acres is zoned properly for us to do about everything we want in Roy. Which is a triangle just off to the side of of this property we're talking about. The things that we're talking about doing here are less uh offensive to those residences than jet noise, uh kerosene burning fuels. Anything else we could do as AC. So I'm gonna say this is a big step forward for those residences to not have those nuisances of of what goes on at an airport.
I I I'm just uh some experience that we've had with uh another city adjacent as we. St- stood up some of those buildings out in BDO, so I just, I wanna just make sure that. Yeah, I I I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, I'm just saying maybe we should have a conversation that might be coming. Oh, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, I wanna reiterate that we're, we're not rezoning this property yet, right? So those notices and those radiuses that those those residents need to be notified, isn't happening yet. This is, this is kind of why we're talking about this, is is the Kemp's land, but that is not happening yet, we will have to go through a separate rezone.
Absolutely.
Right, but I don't think we're required to notify those residents cuz they're not in Ogden City. Exactly, right?
Glenn, is that right?
Uh typically, we do a radius, so.
Even if it's outside, okay.
Yeah, I thought that was the problem we had in Mary Sladeville, that those people weren't notified, maybe I'm wrong.
That was a different uh approval process for BDO than this would be.
Cool, I like it.
So, yeah, there would be a three hundred foot notice for the reason.
Alright, any other questions before we move on? Alright.
So Chair, if it's okay, if I, I just follow up and clarify, so you've got a a bit of an amended proposal. Uh with some input from the petitioners, are you okay as a council to move forward with what was presented tonight? Or do you still wanna have some more discussion? So, uh it sounds like the petitioners have seen uh the text, or at least I'm not sure what they've seen, I haven't seen the actual updated ordinance yet. Um so do you wanna see the actual hard text first, or do you, are you okay? Uh with us working with planning and legal to get that finalized so we can notice that for a meeting in the future?
I'd love to see the ordinance.
Do you want it back in a work session, or do you want us to have it?
I think it'd be helpful in a work session.
Okay.
I agree, I'm I'm comfortable in this conversation, but everything takes full form and shape when it's. Within the corners of a co- uh ordinance.
I'm okay with that, I think if we uh get the the final ordinance, schedule one more work session just to, as a final review and then.
Yeah.
Move it forward.
And that's fine, and as far as dates, we'll, we'll figure out a date that works for everybody, should be the next uh week or two, probably. But we'll work with planning and legal to get that final ordinance in front of you, so you can.
Yeah, we can have it ready tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing going on down there, Brandon, planning?
Oh, yeah, no, it's just we have the ordinance ready, so.
Brandon, I just wanna thank you because I think the first time we looked at it was just massive amounts of, you know.
Yeah, I apologize.
And slides, and this was very much.
Concise.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next up, let's bring up Justin Sorenson, our controller. Um to give us a discussion on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four quarterly financial report. Second quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then I also, also moving into the uh. The quarterly capital improvement projects, we'll do both of those, right?
Correct.
Alright.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to come and uh present to you uh our quarterly updates for our financials and our CIP. For the timeframe ended um December thirty-first.
May I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
I am so sorry, I missed your name and I'm still in the learning curve, I just, so if you wouldn't mind.
That's alright, my name's Justin Sorenson, um the comptroller for the city. Um I was uh promoted to this position back in November, um following Lisa's promotion to the director position, so. Pleasure to be here.
You know, I just, for for fun, I grew up in Minnesota and Wisconsin and with the city personality, you'd think I was in Wisconsin or Minnesota. The Andersons and Johnsons and Sorensens and I feel like I'm amongst my brothers.
Um so to begin the discussion on where we're at to date, uh so these are the numbers for revenues and expenditures. Um for the city, I know the numbers are a little small, um but through the first six months of the year, you would anticipate that we would be about halfway. Um through our our budget as far as received and revenues received and expenditures. Um so you can see here, this is a list of um the general fund, all of our enterprise funds, um our our internal service funds. And our our grant funds, um and where we're at year to date as of December thirty-first. And if there are any questions as we're going through these slides, please feel free to 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 ask and hopefully I'll have those answers for you. In looking at our general fund revenue to date, uh obviously a majority of those revenues come from our taxes, from property taxes and sales tax. Um those are our two uh majority ones, those are not received evenly throughout the year. Um property taxes, those are received by the county in November and then our portion is distributed to us in December. And so the 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 thirty-one million received in taxes, that does include our large property tax distribution for the year. So a majority of our property taxes have been received for the year. And licenses and permits, those are recognized as they're received. Our intergovernmental revenues, um those are grants and other revenues um that we receive throughout the year. Um from other governments or between funds. Uh our charges for services, those include things for different fees like um our recreation fees, park fees. Um planning fees, those types of things, so again, those are recognized as they're received as well. Um our fines and forfeitures, I, those are our our tickets, those different types of things, uh the the courts. And then other fi- financing sources, that includes our our transfers from other funds, which also includes the transfers from our utilities.
Justin, remind me about how much uh of the taxes are actually property taxes.
That is actually on the next slide.
Well, there you go.
So our our total tax and general fund, our our total tax revenue is just over, our budgeted amount is just over fifty-seven million. Of which twenty-seven million is from sales tax and twenty, twenty and a half, twenty million, twenty point five million is property taxes. So, over the last few years, as we've seen inflation, um sales tax has grown. It they were a lot closer to each other three or four years ago, but over the last few years, as we've seen. But the sales tax numbers have grown quite substantially, and so you can see that there in our budgeted amount, so. So, quite a bit, I mean, you can see that breakdown there. As far as what's been received to date, I wanted to go ahead and share just since we are um in the middle of March now. So you can get a better idea of where we're at today on our taxes. I've gone, I went in and polled what we've received um through through March thirteenth, this is when I updated the slide. And so as of right now, um we usually, we're usually, as far as sales tax, we're a month behind in what we received those on those distributions. So as of, as of the end of February, we've, we're, we've received seven distributions for the year. Um we're trending behind budget and we talked about this, I know in our, the last time we presented this, we were trending behind our budgeted numbers for sales tax. We are at this time still trending behind that number. Um where we're looking right now is is we could end up, where we're trending right now could end up being about four. Four point eight percent behind our budgeted amount or or that's around seven hundred and fifty thousand, um less than what our our act, our estimated budget was for sales tax. Is where we're, where we're trending right now. Um obviously, we still have four more months, five more months of distributions to go, but as you can see, that's where our sales tax number is.
So are you encouraging us to buy local?
Yes, yes, please buy local, buy an Ogden, it pays to 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 spend in Ogden. Um looking at our expenditures to date, so you can see here, um. A majority of our general fund ex budget um is attributed to our police department, you can see that large amount there. Um just personnel, a lot of that is, most of that is personnel, and a lot of our general fund budget is personnel. Um but as of today, we, there isn't any, any, overall, we're right at fifty percent spent. Um as of December thirty-first, um and you can see there where some of the different departments are, non-departmental. Does seem a little bit higher and that's just, that's where our, some of our debt is, is in our non-departmental. And so those payments come out at the beginning of our fiscal year and so that usually trends higher throughout the year as we've already made those payments. Looking at our enterprise funds, so again, here, the the blue line is the the budgeted amounts. And then the yellow is our expenditures today and our orange is our our revenues today. And so you can see where a lot of those funds are, um some of them look, when you compare expense versus revenue. Uh our property management fund, which is where BD lease revenue is received. Um as of December thirty-first, we've only received one quarter's worth of payments there, so that's why those revenues look really low compared to our expenses. Um and then in the airport fund, we do our annual billings in January, so we'll see those revenues for the leases. Um that will be out in January, and so that's why the airport revenues look low right now as well. Here's a numerical look at that, that same information um for the enterprise funds and where they're sitting at. Uh for the internal service funds, this includes our fleet and facilities, our IT and our risk management. Uh, for the internal service funds, this includes our fleet and facilities, our IT and our risk management. Uh, risk management usually trends higher throughout the year, just because a lot of our premiums are due beginning of the fiscal year, and so again, those um that expense line usually is higher than the revenue side um in our risk fund. IT, again, as we make those purchases, and then they charge them back to our departments for purchases. Um, sometimes those expenses will outpace the revenues till we've recorded those revenues. And then same with fleet and facilities, as they are purchasing, a lot of that is our, our fleet replacement um funds that they as they go out and, and replace vehicles on um according to the schedule for replacement. Are there any questions regarding the financials before I jump into the CIP side?
Justin, can you tell me what a, a franchise tax is?
So the franchise tax, that includes the taxes that receive, we receive, sorry, um from Dominion Energy, uh Rocky Mountain Power. So it's that percentage that they pay to us um as a franchise agreement that we've signed with them. It also includes Comcast, and um we also receive a municipal energy tax. And so that's what makes up those franchise taxes. Any other questions before talk CIP?
Just real quick on, just clarity on the, the budget number, when we look at revenue and expenses, both revenue and expenses are expected to budget or equal that.
Correct, yes.
They're intended to equal each other, right? So our revenue should equal our expenses. So on that fleet, silly's and fleet budget is twelve, twelve million. The revenue and expenses should both equal that, correct?
Correct, yeah. So yeah, we, we budget it, we budget our revenues to equal our expenditures, and so. And the other thing to note that I forgot to mention is um our carryover that we usually post, or that we, that we add in from prior year as of December thirty-first hadn't, hadn't posted yet, and so that will also be reflected in the next one. So that is another reason why some of those budgets, for example, are Weber Morgan Strike Force. If you look at theirs, their expenses are a lot higher than what the budget shows right now, but that's because we have carryover funds that we haven't posted as of December thirty-first, so. Uh, CIP, um so this is an update for where, where we're at spending on our, our projects uh for the city, and I, I do have Taylor Nelson's here, if there's any specific for any projects that, or any questions that I may not be able to answer right now. Um, I got these pictures from Ed, our, our recreation manager of, of some of the up, uh updates of the Marshall White construction, so I thought I'd share those with you.
It's so exciting.
It is very exciting. And a big, a big amount of what has been spent during that last quarter was for the, this construction, so, which we would anticipate with this going, project going on. So just as a reminder, especially with two newer council members, um our, our projects that we fund, we have a lot of different ways that we fund those. Um, and we, I like to include this information here just as a reminder of how we how we fund the projects that we're doing. Um, uh, they're in this, in our CIP fund, a lot of those, a lot of funding comes from uh BDO lease revenue that we use. We also have funded some projects with medical funds. Um, and then also there has been need, uh we've also used general fund money to help fund projects. We also receive um revenue from BNC road funds and active transportation. Those are both restricted taxes that can only be used for a specific use. And so those, a, a majority of those, we transfer into our CIP fund, and we use those for street projects and sidewalk projects, um which is what their restricted use is.
Here's a lot of acronyms that I have never seen before, like the BNC road funds. I just to clarify.
So it's the class, class BNC. I don't remember off the top of my head, Taylor, what the BNC stands for. Is it? And then ramp, that's a, the county that awards those, so those ramp funds, we receive those each year. We um apply for different projects each year um for different recreation or park projects that, that, that the county will then the uh make a determination on how much to fund and which ones they'll um they'll pick. And then from there, a lot of those require a, a city match, and so the city will match those, those, those funds. Uh, WACOG, which is our Weber area, or sorry, Weber Area Council of Governments. So those funds, a lot of those we use for street projects. Um, is what those WACOG funds will go towards. Uh, we also receive funds from the state at times. Um, most recently, uh, we received ten million dollars a few years ago from the state for airport improvements. Um, so that's a big chunk of money. Uh, we also receive federal funds at times, and then FAA for the airport. So those are funds that we receive that can only be used on the airport for purposes there, so we all, so that's another source. And then we also receive donations from time to time that help with, with projects. And then this is a picture of, I know Todd Brinkton, the, the golf course manager is very excited about this. Um, the deck that's being built out there at El Monte. Um, I know it's getting close, and so I know he would have really encouraged anybody to go out and check it out. I think it'll be a really great feature um for them out there at the, at the clubhouse, so.
I saw it Saturday. It does look really good.
I think it'll bring a lot of non-golfers out, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, it, it's going to be a game changer for El Monte, like the, like the pavilion did at, at Mount Ogden.
Yeah.
Did your second drive make it all the way up to the deck with the wind?
You can tee off from the, from the deck.
Um, as far as what's been appropriated this year, so just, just to show you the dollar amounts that we, this is just our total appropriations in fiscal year twenty-four that we've put towards projects in the CIP fund, over twenty-three million dollars for the airport, three hundred thousand dollars, nine point three million dollars for water utility for continual replacement, pipe replacement, and same with our sanitary and storm, over a million dollars in each of those funds. Um, and then three hundred and fifty thousand in the golf fund, which, as you can see in the picture here, is to help towards golf, the, the irrigation um improvements and replacements at the golf courses. And so quite a bit of funding um for projects. As far as oh, and I was gonna mention, um currently, there is a hundred and fifteen projects between all of these funds and utilities that have funding. They're either in a design stage or a construction stage. Um, eighty-eight of those are in the CIP fund, so quite a few, we have quite a few projects. There are six in the airport, uh nine in the water fund, um we have nine in the sanitary and storm funds. And then we also have um a couple in the golf course fund.
So Justin, on that, if I, again, a little education for me. If you go back to that previous slide, it, the airport, water utility, sanitary utility, storm and golf, those are all enterprise
Correct.
organizations within the city. And if I recall, last year, some of them had a surplus. Do they roll back into their own account, or?
Yes.
Okay, so they get to use for their own improvement and betterment there, just depending upon the city for CIP money.
Ex, yeah, except, yeah. So yeah, on those, on the enterprise, on the user utilities, the water, the sanitary, the storm, as they have excess each year, that would run into their fund balance, which then we use that to help with the capital needs as we go forward, yes. Um, here's a summary of spending for the last quarter, so over six million dollars in the CIP fund. Half of that, over half of that was payments for the Marshall White construction. Um, we had money spent on the airport, which was partially, as they were starting to get the terminal um ready for, for Breeze Airways, so that was spending there. And then for water, sanitary and storm, those are projects related to their, their master plans as they continue to do re- um improvements in pipe and replacement throughout the city. So a lot of the expenditures for those are following their master plans. Um, and then we had some spending, we have a, a small CIP in the cemetery fund. And then the hundred and eleven thousand in the golf fund, a majority of that was for their, the deck that they're working on right now. Any questions that anybody has?
What was your paving on, on Monroe pictures for? It didn't look like it fit the you know, the, the slide there.
Oh, so these are, they're just a couple. I, I had asked some managers for some pictures of projects that they've been working on, and so these are both of some paving that they did. Um, five fifty North Monroe and six seventy-five North Monroe, so they did some overlay there. Um, yes, and part of the engineering project, so that they would have come out of probably E, our street construction project where we've found a lot of improvements.
Yeah, those are, you know, North Monroe from uh North Street to eleven hundred is a pretty hot item around my area. Um, a lot of call for rotor mill and, and, and lay down some new asphalt uh in the areas, at least in the areas that haven't been done. It's real patchwork going on right now, so. I don't know if you have any input.
I don't, but our
He just signs the checks.
Our city engineer might. I know, Taylor, if you have any.
Taylor, you want to come up and address that? That'd be awesome.
We, we have a couple of water projects. We're trying to finish up in that area.
I know.
We can finish that up. We got cones both sides of the street, all the way from north to eleven hundred now.
If you guys might know, we're really good at uh putting things under construction. We had the whole downtown under construction for a little bit, so now we just picked your area up on the north side. We're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure we're going in, we're bringing a lot, because as part of that, we're looking at like new signal placement. So we're trying to make sure if we can put in a signal on eleven hundred north, we've got the conduits in, finishing up the waterline projects. And then Daniel, who's our assistant city engineer, is right now looking at uh traffic uh striping and layouts, trying to alleviate some of the other concerns from that area. So we're trying to look at doing all of those as soon as we can get the water stuff and everything else wrapped up.
So the street surface, one of your concerns?
It, it is. It's one that we want to make sure we're coming back and trying to leave something new, but
Yeah.
the, the worst case scenario is we put down the new street surface and cut it again immediately to put a utility in.
Oh, yeah, I, I get you there. And, and you guys have been really good about that.
So that's, that's we're being proactive. We're just trying to finish up and seeing where the rest of our budgets land, and then we're coming back, and that is one of the items that we're looking at.
So signal eleven hundred and, and Monroe?
And, and Monroe, yeah.
I know we've been talking about eleven hundred north and Washington with UDOT.
That, that's an additional one, but we are looking at one, we're trying to study one right now at eleven hundred in Monroe to preempt the one at eleven hundred in Washington. So as soon as we put one at eleven hundred in Washington, we know that'll bring a bunch more traffic.
Mm-hmm.
So they're just, that's just the other idea, that we're just ready for eleven hundred in Monroe, so we put in conduits and everything now again, so we don't have to cut up the streets.
Okay.
So we, we're just trying to plan as much infrastructure as possible and as least road cut.
Well, it certainly will be important uh when it goes through into North Ogden.
Absolutely. So, but those are, those are great questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin? Oh, he's got more?
No, that, sorry, that's it. No, it's just the last, this is a, 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 a picture of a sidewalk replacement, yeah, which that's a, that's obviously a big a big thing that we have going on as well as we, where we can um sidewalk re- uh replacement where it's needed, so.
And we'll, we'll hear later about that. Uh, the, how they'll, the city will go in specific areas and target and to try and get as many of them done in, in one area as possible. So you don't know exactly where they are at this point, or maybe not even working on anything at
I don't.
right now. Taylor, bring Taylor back up. Get us exercise. There we go.
Um, what we have is we're bringing Triple J, who's our contractor, back in. We have some stuff that we're taking care of here in the downtown. And then we've identified a couple of areas that are right here, I think in East Central that we're trying to hit. And then I need to look at the other two areas, but um I, I can find that out and get that back to you guys uh shortly.
Yeah, I, I, we normally hear about that as part of the budget process, so I figured we would, but just.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely follow up on all those items, no problem.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will these, do these come to us on an agenda for acceptance, or I'm just, no, it's just, it's just a information?
Just a report that's, and it's required to be given to you, so that's why they're on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
We tried putting them as informational items, and then we realized that you actually have to receive them.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had to receive them in a council meeting and accept them like we have on some other reports, correct, so. Last, we have uh Steve Burton to join us, our policy analyst and council staff, to talk about a proposed flagpole use ordinance.
Good evening, everyone. So um the uh council office staff, um we've received uh some interest from council member hire in having a discussion about the possibility of the council adopting a city flagpole use ordinance. Um, to provide you with a little bit of context, you may remember uh back in May of last year, the council adopted a city flag ordinance that talks about what the flag looks like and um the meaning behind it. Um, but there currently isn't any city ordinances or code that say which flags should be flown and, and how, what order they should be flown in. Um, so um what we've, what, what we've received is a draft ordinance language that I'm gonna show you here. Um, just adding additional language to the city flag ordinance that, that was adopted last year. Let me see here, if I can find a way to move down just a little bit here. Next page, there we go. Okay, so the under, the underlined um language is, is the new proposed draft language. Um, and I'll show you um what that looks like. So you can see, it, it's, it's really just a few lines, but um it, it says, you know, it says which flags can be flown, and then the order that, that they're to be flown in, which, which follows state code about that. The, this language, specifically this language is modeled off of a draft administrative policy um that the city has that is making its way through the approval processes, we understand it, that hasn't yet been approved.
Can I, can I just say something about this, Steve? We thought it had been approved, and in fact, legal had thought it had been approved. But um when they got looking for it and it hadn't shown up in the administrative policy, they realized that, that there was some miscommunication back in November. Uh, when Mayor called all those here, he was intended to sign it, but it didn't get signed, so there there is not a city policy at this point.
Yeah, thanks. And um yeah, just having received that um interest from a council member, uh we wanted to have a, a discussion. Chair, if that's okay, we'd love to hear your, hear the group's thoughts on
Yes.
adopting something like that.
Thoughts?
Has there been inconsistency in how the flags have been flown to this point at various city flagpoles?
Not that, not that we're aware of.
And, and where are the flagpoles for the, that the city owns located?
Um, so this, this, it would be, this would apply to any city-owned flagpole. I, I couldn't tell you all of them, but any property that the city owns that has a flagpole on it. Um, like, like the one out in front of this building.
I think all of the fire stations.
Fire station, public safety building. I'm not sure if there's one that, or, I don't sure if there's, I don't think there is one at public.
I think they do down on Wall, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, oh, Taylor's nodding that it does, so.
Just makes some sense around consistency. And I think there's ordinance with regard to how flags are stacked at the national level anyway, aren't there?
Well, there are practices. Um, and if you talk, depending on the different people you talk to, you know, there are rules, but they're, they're not terribly consistent, so I'm not sure if that makes it a rule. Uh, you know, you talk to the Boy Scouts, they got their rules for it. You talk to you know, military, they probably have their own rules, but uh the, the, uh, the thing that I was uh, I'm in- interested in this for is is I think it uh, you know, as a, as a citizen of the city, you want your, your city to be apolitical, and, and it's, it's easy to, to have a political message run up the flagpole. And so this, this helps to keep the, the politics out of our that's the thinking.
I don't, oh, your mouth. I think it, maybe it might be similar. I hope I'm not stealing you. On that, um, I was just saying, the only thing that I was, I don't have a problem with this at all. I was just curious about sometimes, although it might be political, um, you know, sometimes you may want to fly a flag in solidarity with another community, like Ukraine, for example. That's the one I'm thinking of. Or something like that, and I wonder if there could be some statement that would be like in case, in other cases, or there could be an exception or something, because I, I don't know. There might be things that
Yeah.
wouldn't be necessarily apolitical in the world context, but it's pretty apolitical locally.
So you're saying that you, anything that could get general public uh the, the mayor's general public sentiment?
Yeah, and the mayor could have the discretion. I don't know, or something, I don't know.
I don't know either, right?
You could probably do that. I actually had that discussion with the city attorney. Um, he, he just pointed out that, you know, once you start making an exception, then, then it can get you into some legal trouble. Let's, you know, for example, if you wanted to fly an Israel flag or a
Right.
or a not, you know, uh, you know, uh and the other flag, sorry, I think of it. Um, you know, some people might want it one way and some people another, so um it's only for flagpoles, so that doesn't mean that he couldn't put it somewhere else, hang it from the hang it from the front of the building or put it on, you know, around the municipal block or something like that.
We put Weaver State flags around the block and, and, you know, things like that. But, but it's not gonna go up the pole. Like, the, the exception argument, I, I kinda push back on that because once you have too many exceptions, you really don't have a rule. And I think it's, you know, so anyway, without knowing what that exception might be, which in that case, you might just write it into the ordinance.
I guess with that exception, would that, could that be something a future council could adopt as an exception essentially, basically?
They can undo anything we can.
Anything we can do, they can undo, right? So, I mean, that's just another thought is if that, if that were the, I mean, other than it maybe takes some time to go through a meeting and, and that, but anyway.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I, any other thoughts or comments or, I mean, I like the idea of having some structure and some, and, and I can agree with that. Like, other than where's the Weaver State flag on the list, I don't know.
Yeah, there's others, if there's other thoughts on it, feel free to follow up with us and we'll, we'll work on a, on a time to have it be considered in the future, so. Unless there's any other thoughts, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other council business? Any other comments before we do it a, a little bit of an adjourn before our six P M. meeting?
Just a couple of quick comments, Chair.
Yes.
First, this morning, Glenn and Brandon did a nice job with Day Spring students that sat in our chairs in the council area and got a little introduction to government in general, but local government in specific. They did a really great job. All of us attended the fire department awards thing last, it's a Thursday evening. And I just thought that was outstanding, they really represented themselves well. And a lot of the data that the chief shared, the chief shared, just kinda blew me away. What was it, two thousand calls in a year where they send equipment out? Just amazing, the, the work that they do.
Yeah, the amount of training hours, I was, I was like, I pulled up my phone to get a picture and I'd moved on. I'm gonna have to ask for that one, that was incredible. Anything else, now that I just took a bite? Okay, we're, we'll be adjourned until our six P M.